This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. And as always, we will start out with a prayer and a pledge. Dr. Nation.
Let us pray. Our Lord, we first want to thank you for the many blessings we experienced simply because of your love for us. Thank you for allowing us to live in this country, this state, and this community. Tyler, Texas, the United States of America. In this time of turmoil in our country and worldwide, give us the insight to see conflicts as challenges in which we recognize opportunities to make things right or at least better. We pray for your protection for those who may be in fear for their lives or impending persecution. Comfort them in circumstances that we can only imagine. Our students have returned to school ready, willing, and even excited to meet their teachers and greet their friends. Thank you for a relatively smooth opening of the school year. Please continue to protect all participants in this time of continued pandemic. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to educate the children in our charge in a way that they are able to meet their individual potential. Thank you for the teachers, administrators, and staff who readily step up and do whatever needs to be done for their kids. I pray for this community that we all will recognize our responsibility to be examples of good citizenship. Give us, the trustees who sit at this dais, the wisdom to make appropriate decisions to meet the needs of each and every student in Tyler Independent School District. Thank you for your guidance for each decision. I pray these things in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Okay, we do not have any items coming out of executive session, so we're going to move along to public participation. And we do have quite a few speakers tonight, so if you don't mind setting the timer just generally for four minutes, we're not going to hawk it too bad or anything, but since we have a good many. First up, we have Bob Brewer.
Hello.
How are you?
Great to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity. As lead in about what I'm about to say is, I worked at a center of excellence for the EPA in California. I was an atmospheric chemist. I sampled particles down to the tiniest you can imagine. So anyway, I've worked with some of the top scientists on there, so I know a little bit about what I'm about to say. Actually, questions. Why do we encourage inoculations when the death demographic by decade is mostly 80 years and above? Why do pharmaceutical companies have absolutely no liabilities for the products that you are promoting on these inoculations? Do you have liability against lawsuits if the inoculations you are promoting result in life-altering reactions or death? If inoculations are safe, why is Houston ISD paying $500 for the recipient of each inoculation that just happened last Wednesday? Why do we need inoculations when we have cures that are being restricted by government agencies? Those cures have been used for up to 60 years and are considered essential for world health. Why does the media censor anyone who talks about these remedies and prophylaxis? Why do no medical conglomerates allow the use of these remedies like our major hospital chains? Why are we forcing edicts when our constitution was written and y'all swore an oath to defend our God-given unalienable rights? Specifically, our right to choose how we protect our life and our pursuit of happiness. Why are we enforcing edicts when we have a guaranteed republican form of government? All of these edicts are just made up by some expert that got hired to say those things and any law that we enforce needs to be legislated. Why are we enforcing inoculation edicts when the death rate from them on June 22nd was right at 6,000? Six weeks later, this peak had gone up to 12,000. And this week, just one week later, it's 13,000. These are from the VAERS federal government system for reporting vaccine injuries. The average death per year from vaccine injuries is 200 to 300 over the last 30 years, and now we're sitting at 13,000 just this year. Why does media report no new cases but never reports the deaths? Because this variant of COVID is very much less lethal than the previous one. Why does media report new cases but never reports the number of tests administered? If you don't know the denominator of the number, you don't know how important the data presented is. Why did we rely on PCR tests for over a year that never correctly identified a COVID virus? We went through a whole year of trauma with a test that was just absolutely just picking up random viruses. Why did PCR test attenuation change over the course of the pandemic? It went from like 17 up to 25, 30, and even 40, depending on what number they wanted to produce on the number of cases. Why was the PCR test canceled about a month ago? And why do we give inoculations when countries like Gibraltar, 99% inoculated, had an increase in COVID cases 2,500% right after the inoculations? So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Normally, we don't applause and everything like that, so just let you all know. Okay. All right. Next, we have Kristen Bentley. And I don't know if it's Christine or Kristen. Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Kristen Bentley, and I am opposed to agenda items B and C, and that's why I'm here today. I am a special education advocate. I am a parent of a TISD student. I pay taxes in this district, and I also have a group called Texas Freedom Coalition. We are a statewide organization that has over 130,000 followers combined on social Both of these agenda items are extremely important to people like me and my group. What you are saying is that you are going to incentivize your staff members, your teachers, to get a vaccine by paying them $500. And you are also going to treat those people differently if they get sick with COVID. And that's probably the most disgusting aspect that I read, and that's part C, I believe. That is wrong. It's unethical. And I also believe it's unconstitutional. Now, let me first tell you why it's wrong. It's divisive. This is people's private information. These are their private choices. They have a right to decide what to put in their body and what not to without their employer knowing and incentivizing that. It's divisive. It's discriminatory. What you are incentivizing is a zero liability product. Zero liability. Do you understand what that means? It means if your employee gets sick from that vaccine or, God forbid, dies, because that does happen, they will have no recourse. Their families will have no recourse. It is a zero liability product that you are incentivizing. Now, let me tell you why it's unconstitutional. If you pass this, I'm going to go on social media and I am going to let every single one of your employees who does not want to get this vaccine, I'm going to educate them on what to do. I'm going to tell them, write a religious exemption for yourself. Let the district know and file it with Human Resources that you have a personal, deeply sincere, sincerely held religious belief that keeps you from getting this vaccine. And believe me, there are a lot of us that do. Number two, I'm going to tell your employees, if they have a health condition where their doctor has advised them to not get this vaccine, I'm going to tell them, let your employer know. Because as soon as they do that, and as soon as you pay them differently or give them benefits that are different than the vaccinated, you are violating their civil rights and you will have a lawsuit on your hands. So please, do not pass that. Do not pass B or C. Do not incentivize your employees to get a vaccine that they don't want. Do not treat employees differently. That is divisive. It is wrong. And it violates, potentially violates, their civil rights. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bentley. All right. Okay, we have Sarah J. Fields coming up.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Fields.
Hi. My name is Sarah Fields. I'm Director of Advocacy for Texas Freedom Coalition, and I'm actually here to speak on the behalf of Dr. Ben Scott, who cannot be here today because his daughter injured her ankle. So I'm just going to go right into it. My name is Dr. Ben Scott. I'm a resident of Tyler, Texas, and I'm an active member of Green Acres Baptist Church, where I often sit next to Mr. Washman. I earned a PhD in microbiology and immunology from the University of Texas Medical Branch Galveston in 2005 and completed my fellowship at the Hospital of the University of Pennsylvania in 2008. I would like to say that I'm standing here today to give you expert testimony on the safety and the efficiency of COVID-19 vaccines, which is a misnomer, but I'm not. On behalf of citizens, parents, and patriots in Tyler, Texas, I'm unfortunately standing here to voice my concerns on the proposed COVID-19 vaccine incentive policy being considered by the board. In the United States of America, medical decisions by an adult are private and determined solely by the individual. They are not the business of an employer and should never serve as the basis for employment or compensation, regardless of what is currently allowable by law in the state of Texas. Thirteen months ago, Tyler, Texas, made state and even national news because this board, sitting here today, voted to change two high school names that were rooted in segregation and were felt to discriminate and cause emotional distress to Tyler citizens and students at Tyler ISD. This change was widely supported by many, and the schools are now named Tyler Legacy and Tyler High School. My question to you is, how can this same school board, that no doubt spent many hours praying and discussion over that important decision, even for a moment, consider the vaccine incentive program under discussion? In the same way as the names of those schools created an oppressive and hurtful environment for the students and residents of Tyler, so will this program actively create an oppressive and discriminatory environment for the employees who chose privately and likely through much prayer and discussion with family members to not receive a medical procedure that until today was still experimental? Again, these are private medical decisions. Some may consider my position dramatic, but think about it for a moment. This program will provide a financial reward for one group of employees over another, not at all based on employee performance, but solely upon a demographic characteristic, which in this case is whether they privately choose to receive an injection. This is the very definition of discrimination. It is no different at all than if you chose to reward employees based on their choice of whether to receive an annual flu shot, have a same-sex marriage, overeat, smoke, abort a baby, or worship in a church, temple, or mosque. This decision will affect Tyler ISD employees of all races and all ethnic backgrounds. So in conclusion, please take a moment and consider, is this the legacy, the legacy, that this school board wants to leave? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fields. All right. Next up, we have Thomas Faubry. Apologize if I said that last name wrong. Middle letter was hard for me to read or make out, I should say.
I wish I could use the defense of being a doctor, but just bad handwriting. Sorry about that.
All right.
My name is Thomas Fabry, F-A-B-R-Y, just for the record. So I live at 7338 Willow Creek Drive here in Tyler. So I'm new to this town, and so when I saw the agenda tonight, I actually went out to your website. And nowhere under your five core beliefs could find, I find, anything about delving into your staff's personal medical histories and proclivities. So I was really concerned why you would be proposing a $500 stipend for a slice, one slice of your employee base. So as I tried to think about this thing, and I won't repeat some of the things other people have said, so this is a retroactive policy, which is interesting. But what it doesn't even mention is the group of people who actually have the most resistance to this virus and its variations among all the population, and that's people who have natural immunity or are recovered from COVID, from an earlier case of COVID. So the one group that actually has the most reason for you to celebrate, you've completely omitted. Then you talk about using the same data for tracking. Now, we all know what happened earlier last year when our governor spent nearly $300 million on proposing a tracking mechanism, which has been thrown out both for being ineffective and also being a gross invasion of privacy. So that's part of your policy. And the same exact arguments apply to your extended sick leave policy. Again, what about those people who have natural immunity? And then there's this funny thing that, gee, the CDC is now recommending, or at least some people within the CDC, are now recommending that you get a booster. So does the booster qualify? Or maybe booster number two qualify, or booster X? So you're opening up a policy that there is no end to the rabbit hole. And then there's the financial exposure, because I don't think anybody actually has the actual aerial data to actually predict what kind of exposure you're going to have. Not only on the $500, I'm talking about the lost wages, because nobody knows. And given the recent changes in the breakthrough with the Delta variation because on existing people who've already had the vaccinations, I have a suspicion that you may be opening the door for a substantial... I hope you have a lot of part-time teachers on call. But the final argument is this. It's a deeply personal decision that I don't believe the school board has any responsibility delving into. Another thing on your school board goals is, and I applaud you for this, I came from Frisco, by the way, and Frisco, which is all of its touting, doesn't have the same kind of measurable academic metric goals that you have. I salute you for that. So my counsel to you is, if you're going to put out a stipend, give it to those teachers who are doing their darndest to accelerate academic achievement and stay out of people's personal lives. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, next we have Jennifer White.
Pull it down. I'm Ms. White. Okay. I'm Jennifer White. I'm just a parent. I'm also a registered nurse, but I'm a stay-at-home mom right now. I have the two kids that are in Tyler SD. I'm speaking on the same agenda item, the stipend and the extended leave policy. I am in opposition of these. First of all, it's also exactly what other people have pointed out, that you're an employer, you're asking your staff to sell their privacy to you for $500. Otherwise, why would they, they would not hand that information over to you. You don't have any right to ask them for their private medical information. You can't go to each employee and ask, have you been vaccinated? Have you not been vaccinated? So you've said in this agenda item that you're compiling a list so that you can then determine isolation and quarantine needs, because they're different. I'd like to see evidence of that, but that is just, it's unethical to ask your staff to sell their private medical information. And it's unethical to coerce your staff into accepting a medical treatment that they may not otherwise have, if they have personal beliefs, but need $500 for something. It's a choice that they shouldn't have to make, along with, you're talking about roughly 2,700 staff, so over a million dollars, that could be used in many other programs to facilitate students who fell behind from the pandemic, additional services, emotional health, because a lot of staff and students had emotional issues from the closures and from family members' deaths. If you want to spend that money on preventing COVID health-related items, give your staff flexibility, all of them, to use it for healthcare, for health-related items, you know, fitness memberships and things like that. Whatever will help increase their general health will help decrease their incidence of illness from COVID disease. And as far as giving the extended days of time off only to those who participate in the vaccination incentive program, it's discriminatory. There are many staff who probably cannot, for other religious, personal, medical reasons, receive this vaccine. But your staff who are vaccinated can still spread that to them. So they get sick with a COVID disease that they caught from their vaccinated coworker, and they're punished because they don't have the ability to receive that vaccination by not having access to that emergency leave. Please do not pass these items or find another way to spend that $1.3 million that will benefit the whole district and not violate anybody's rights. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. Next, we have Michael Tolbert. How you doing, Mr. Tolbert?
Doing all right.
Doing all right. Thank you.
I'm here to talk about student safety. I do recall the district statement that they were choosing not to require students to wear masks because of the governor's mandate. I'd like to read a couple of quotes here. "The new executive order emphasizes that the path forward relies on personal responsibility rather than government mandates." That was part of the governor's statement. He said, "Texans have mastered the practices that help to prevent and avoid the spread of COVID-19. They have the individual right and responsibility to decide for themselves and their children whether they wore masks, open their business, and engage in leisure activities." Right after the governor found out that he was COVID positive, he said, "I also want you to know that I have received the COVID-19 vaccine, and that may be one reason why I'm really not feeling any symptoms right now." The governor had the luxury of being able to get the vaccine. Our elementary school kids do not. Kids are dying from the Delta variant right now. Okay. And see, here's the problem. How do you make good decisions with bad information? If the district were making decisions about curriculum, budget, based on information that is false, we wouldn't make bad decisions. We have far too many people in our community, in our nation, that are getting their information from bad sources. We've got to make decisions based on facts. Children are dying from the Delta variant of COVID-19. In Florida, they had a parent that sent their child to school with symptoms, and they infected other kids. They had to shut that district down for, I believe it was a 10-day period. So all that time, they were out of school. The parents had to make other plans, stay home if they didn't have other options to take care of their children. So it costs a lot more than taking the conservative approach and doing what we know works. You know, it doesn't pain me to wear this mask. It doesn't pain a student. Yeah, it may be a little uncomfortable, but I guarantee you that being on a ventilator for one child is much more uncomfortable than 1,000 children wearing a mask. So I ask that you put student safety first. Forget about ideology. Put student safety first. I don't know how many people will clap for me. I'd like to clap for myself, but thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Tolbert. Okay. Last one, we got Lauren A. Snyder.
Hi, Ms. Snyder.
Hi.
Yes, my name's Lauren. I am 27-year-old, single mother of two. I have a five-year-old and a four-month-old, and they are both vibrant, healthy, beautiful babies that are fully and completely unvaccinated, as I was when I was a child, and I have to attest from my own personal experience that I have been very fortunate, healthy, you know, good IQ, stuff like that. And they are also very bright and beautiful, wonderful, smart, especially my five-year-old compassionate creatures. So I wasn't really prepared on anything to say, but I do have some literature here with cited sources, and I have plenty. If it would be okay to pass them out, I don't know what the protocols are.
You can usually just leave them there on the podium, and afterwards, we'll receive them.
Okay. That'd be great. So this information is provided by Texans for Vaccine Choice, and I am a members' care coordinator with them, and I did attend the rally at the Capitol on Saturday. It was amazing. Over 1,500 people were there, and they didn't really get, you know, positive or do justice coverage in the media and stuff like that. You know, there isn't an agenda, I would say, that favors one, you know, perspective over another. And the facts are that, you know, there are no long-term safety studies with this particular vaccine, and if you are going to put pressure on people to do something that's experimental, if there's a risk, there should definitely be a choice with it, because, you know, nobody can predict when or who will get adverse, you know, side effects from it. And let's see. So I'll just read a couple of little things here. It's kind of cut and dry. So, "Safety trials for the vaccines were conducted for only eight to 10 weeks prior to applying for the emergency use authorization. Trials for new drugs or vaccines usually last for several years to test for long-term side effects. It is impossible to know what health effects these vaccines will have on people in the coming months or years. In fact, the FDA's COVID Vaccine Fact Sheet states that serious and unexpected side effects may occur. Additionally, these trials did not include pregnant women, children under the age of 60..." So, "Safety trials for the vaccines were conducted for only eight to 10 weeks prior to applying for the emergency use authorization. Trials for new drugs or vaccines usually last for several years to test for long-term side effects. It is impossible to know what health effects these vaccines will have on people in the coming months or years. In fact, the FDA's COVID Vaccine Fact Sheet states that serious and unexpected side effects may occur. Additionally, these trials did not include pregnant women, children under the age of 16, or anyone with a health condition. Serious adverse reactions are real and are severely, I'll add, under-reported. Over 229,000 adverse events following COVID vaccination have been recorded to VAERS, which stands for Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, as of May 7, 2021. These include 4,057 deaths, according to a government-funded study at Harvard. Less than 1% of all adverse reactions to vaccines are usually submitted to VAERS. So this is just potentially less than 1% of what has actually occurred, and these numbers by themselves are still very concerning. Vaccine makers are exempt from liability, which to me, you know, that's a big deal, because if they're injuring our children or anybody here in the United States and they're not liable, I mean, that's that's concerning, because they're profiting off of this. It's a profitable thing. So unlike other medical products, pharmaceutical companies cannot be sued for vaccines that cause injury, even if the is, even if the company is shown to be negligent. This was established in 1986 by the National Childhood Vaccine Injury Act and reinforced by the PREP Act. Lack of manufacturer liability applies to all vaccines, including those for COVID-19 vaccines. And the whole CDC thing, they do have ties with Big Pharma and the media. They definitely have special interests. I guess I'm going to run out of time. Am I allowed to go 30 seconds over? I'm the last speaker?
Keep it around, keep it around four. You can wrap it up though with a little 15-second number.
Okay, so the CDC is financially tied to vaccine makers. The recommended vaccine schedule is set by the CDC. The financial ties between this government organization and the vaccine industry are well documented. The CDC's involvement with vaccine manufacturers include patenting, licensing agreements, and collaboration on projects to develop new vaccines. In fact, the CDC and its employers hold over 50 profit-generating patents related to vaccines, a clear conflict of interest.
Appreciate it.
And, thank you. And if you are incentivizing people to get these vaccines, isn't that not discriminatory? You know what I mean? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Okay. And I do not believe we have any more public participants tonight. All right, the next item on our agenda is the presentation of a demographic study. Dr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. We ordered this earlier this summer, all right, late spring, to provide an update to our demographic information that we have here in the district. Last time we had this done, I think it was two years ago, pre-pandemic. And I wanted to bring this in front of the board as kind of an update to kind of refresh our memory of what's going on in Tyler in regards to building patterns and student demographics and where people are living. And we have with us tonight Stacy Tapera and Justice Silhavi from PASA, and that's a longtime firm that we've used here in Tyler ISD to provide us information that only they are, not only they are experts, but they are experts at.
Yes. The microphone was much louder.
Probably, it's probably cutting out on your batteries, maybe. Just keep an eye on that, if you don't mind.
Maybe I'm just not close enough.
Probably not used to getting that much use.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks for having us. I'll try to be brief. But yes, that is correct. We were here pre-pandemic. And, you know, of course, a lot has changed, in particular enrollments everywhere. No one was immune. Every district saw, especially their lower grades in their pre-k and kindergarten, saw fewer children enroll. A lot of times, it had to do with, you know, we were noticing at some point that new neighborhoods were tending to enroll fewer children, maybe because to avoid transitions and, you know, too much transition at once. But overall, there's been a decline. We'll talk a little bit about that. My first slide here, I wanted to briefly touch on the pandemic. I know we've heard a lot about it tonight, and we're going to hear a little more right now. We did have an almost 3% decline in total enrollment in this district from the fall 2019 to the fall 2020. There was actually a larger decline because we have to think about what was projected. So every district, of course, that's what we do. We project enrollments forward. When you think about what was most likely to happen, based on our previous study, we actually saw a loss closer to 4%. So we saw about 700 students overall in this district not enroll or withdraw or whatever. And so that was kind of where we started. But go back to 2019, we were dealing with 2018-19 data. And just know that we were really close in fall 2019. We have, we do have a good track record with this district. I think we were within about 27 students. So our projections, in my opinion, are holding pretty good and pretty solid. I don't see any diversion from that. Unfortunately, we're dealing with this loss in enrollment due to COVID-19. So we did assume when we put all this data together back in the spring and very early summer, that we'd see about a 75% return of all the lost students. Not quite there yet. Of course, this is only, what, day five? So we're already up to about 17,900, which was our low-growth scenario. So I'm happy if that's it, to be honest. That means we saw about a 60% return. So one thing that we did see also in the last year or so is a housing acceleration. I'll talk about it briefly here. We saw historically low mortgage rates. Everyone who wanted to buy a home started buying a home. No different here. We have, the market is very, very strong everywhere, a 1.3-month inventory of homes on the market, meaning in 1.3 months, all the homes could be sold. That's very, very low, and average market is considered six months. So we're dealing with a lot happening demographically and in the housing world, and we focus on housing a lot. The first thing I'm going to talk about here is just some very generic slides, and I say generic because we go through these with every district. But one thing I wanted to briefly mention is that employment in the Tyler area is virtually now recovered. We were sitting at about 92% job recovery in May. That could already be up toward 100% now in July, August. There's always a lag in data. But I did mention those historically low mortgage rates. We have to think about that as builders are in a frenzy right now trying to sell as many homes as they can, and that inventory is at 1.3 months. So these next, this next series of slides, show it every time. We're just showing you enrollment in the East Texas region. Tyler is sitting at over 17,000 students. This was fall 2020. Your projection was over 18,000, just remember that. And then, of course, we have some other districts. Hallsville, just to note, in all of these slides, Hallsville's enrollment is bloated due to their their virtual program that they opened about three years ago. So when you look at numeric change, Tyler's down the list because you had that loss this last year. This is one-year change. No one really gained. Even districts we work in this region with who really thought they were quite immune to the pandemic, maybe farther away from town, they still didn't really gain students. So they're still, they still had an effect on their enrollment. Again, ignore Hallsville because of that virtual program that's been adding thousands of students annually. Percent change, when you look at that, Tyler, of course, is down 3%, no surprise, but really, again, no one really saw big gains. So demographically, we have, we have a lot of information in the report. Some of this information is in chapter one. I'll briefly go over a couple of things. You're, you have a very, your metro area kind of mirrors your school district because you're most of the metro area. So you, you don't have a lot of variation in your demographic characteristics, but one thing I will point out here on this chart is that your population, student age, 5 to 17, is quite a bit lower than the Tyler metro area as a whole. You have a lot more retirees moving here, and I'll talk about that when we talk about housing. Because you have an older population moving into homes, you're not necessarily generating as many students. And we say this every time we come here. And it hasn't changed. And so, again, I'll get into that a little more later. Your annual growth rates really have been, you know, slight, some years they're up, some years they're down. You can see going back to 2012 that, that, those valleys and hills virtually staying the same when you kind of average it out, with a very slow growth. This year, of course, we saw that decline of 3%. This is important. This chart here is, it's a lot of bars, but I really want you to just kind of focus on the the far right end. What we're showing here are by grade group. Elementary is blue, high schools green, and the middle school in the middle is orange. By grade group, each year, the increase or decrease in enrollment in each grade group. And you can see in 2018 and 2019, we were seeing large increases in some of the secondary grade groups, middle school. We had been seeing consistent increases in, you know, some of the upper elementary grades, and that's now being seen in your high school. You've seen a lot more high school enrollment in this last year, and high school enrollment wasn't as affected by the pandemic. Almost in every district, we saw very stable high school enrollment. So it was really the lower grades. You can see that that negative bar there, the decline in enrollment in the blue. So we look at that smallest cohort. This is where we kind of start every study, and we think about this as we go through. And so this, this chart is showing your births versus your kindergarten. And we've aged, we've adjusted the age of all the babies born in Tyler ISD so that they align with your kindergarten enrollment. So that dotted line there is our 20, fall 2020 school year, where we had that kindergarten decline. Every district had it. I don't think I've shown one this entire school year where there was a stable line. It was all decline because those small grades saw the decline. But the truth is, your births are actually showing a continuation in decline. So, so we're not really seeing an increase in births in Tyler ISD. Now, this isn't really anything new. We've, we've been noticing this for a few years, and it's really statewide. Starting in about 2016 or so, we started seeing a decline in the number of babies born, really across the board, all races and ethnicities. And one ethnicity in particular that has seen a decline in the very small babies born is the Hispanic population, especially the immigrant population. And so we've seen in some areas that are a little more prone to, a little more Hispanic-focused. And you see this a lot in some of the urban areas. We've seen a decline in babies born in these zip codes. So that doesn't surprise me at all that it's happening in Tyler. It's not a dramatic decline, though. But what we can expect is maybe a plateauing of births for a while. Remember, your housing is also countering that, and I'll talk about that later. But it's something to think about. If you're having fewer babies born or you're plateauing, and especially if you're continuing to have charter school growth, which tend to, you know, take in your youngest cohorts and then they move on, you may not be seeing as many students enroll in the future. Again, it's nothing major yet, but it's something we need to watch out for. So another thing we look at are enrollment shares. And so I mentioned charters. They've been growing. We don't know of any major expansions right now, anything huge. But charters already account for around 10% of your, your actual enrollment in public schools. We estimate that in private schools, about 11% of the students who live in this district attend private schools. So roughly about the same number. So that takes your share to be around 77, 78%. Now, the, the loss of 700 students, it kind of messed up these numbers a little bit. But you also do have a big chunk of students attending other districts. Think of your neighbors, about 2% as well. So you do have a lot of students transferring out. So we think about that, but we can't really alter this in any way unless we know something significant. For instance, if we know a charter school is expanding. So we know in the past Cumberland has been expanding quite a bit. We know of another, you know, they are building a new facility right now, but we're not seeing anything huge on the horizon, but that can change. So again, housing is really what changes your, your enrollment more than anything, to be honest. But you don't get a lot of students from it. So let's start with that. We have detailed maps of the district showing all the land ownership. We have to start with that so we know who owns what land. If a developer wants to move in and has purchased land, we know to look at that piece of property and project students for it. And we know that your attendance zones, of course, cover geographic areas, so it matters where developments go. But we don't just focus on active developments. We think about what could happen. And we talk to your cities, you only have two, and we talk to them about what's going in, what's being platted today that could affect maybe three, four, or five years from now or beyond. So we look 10 years out, and it's difficult to look 10 years out because, A, people aren't even born yet who are going to be in your schools in 2026, right, kindergartners. But we have to do our best with the data we have today. And we also have to think about where utilities are located, and again, who's selling land and what might be developing, you know, five to 10 years from now. So we have a good, good take on what's happening in the first five years. And in the latter five years, we have to kind of finish the projections and look at long-term trends. So this map is showing you hotspots of growth. It's all housing. So it's our projected occupancies, how many homes or apartment units will be occupied in the first five years of the projection period. And I've highlighted a few things here that I think are of most importance. And so, again, the red areas are your, we call them planning units, if you're not familiar. They're just pieces of your attendance zones. We have determined that those planning units in red will have over 125 new housing occupancies or greater in the next five years. And you can see there's a concentration. It's down there just north of Loop 49, off Old Jacksonville Road, really, off Old Noonday Road. You have a lot of new subdivisions going in there, and even more planned now. And so focusing in on that south-central area, we have Oak Creek continuing to build out at a very rapid rate. And Legacy Bend, which was formerly known as Cumberland West, they've been plating a lot of sections there. So you can expect that to get going and ramping up. Next, Three Lakes Middle School, a new neighborhood of roughly 200 homes is planned. Calling it Henshaw Creek right now, so that's just to the west of Three Lakes. Lindsay Crossing, moving up north now toward Loop 323. That neighborhood's really taken off out west of town. So you can continue seeing that build out. And we have seen a lot of plating activity in the northwest just in the last year. So about two or three new neighborhoods, perhaps for each one about 100 to 150 lots. If you kind of think of County Road 46 or State Highway 110, out in that direction, northwest of town. So we're going to have to monitor that. None of them have broken ground yet, but we're seeing activity out there more than we ever have. Looking out to the next five years, 2025 to 2030, again, a lot of these same players are going to be adding new housing. But I've added a few things here to look out for. So the property just west of us over here off the loop, it's been known as Bellwood for a long time. Now, it might be being marketed as a west-side place. I'm not sure if that's just going to be the commercial part or not, but that is what's been on a brochure I've seen. So the Bellwood tract that you're familiar with, we do believe it will start breaking ground soon. There may be a multifamily component, I've been told, that will be likely the first phase. And that could be upwards of eh, 300, 275 units. A phase of housing, single-family housing, that could be rental housing as well. These are, they're called built-to-rent, single-family communities. They're becoming very popular now. And then after that, even a few more phases of traditional single-family housing. So it's not going to happen right away, but maybe within three or four years, you could start seeing that, I've been told by Providence Real Estate. Moving south, there has been a little bit of plating activity also around Noonday that I wanted to mention. It's not a lot, but it's, again, more than we've seen in a while. So there is new housing starting to spread out a little more northwest and southwest. So things to watch out for. And then, again, that Old Jacksonville, Old Noonday corridor, that's really going to be where most of your growth is in the next 10 years continuing. So when you look at projections 10 years out, our blue bars here are showing you the first five years. The orange bars to the right are your second five years. Really not much difference. Very consistent development occurring in Tyler. Within the 10-year period, you still have a lot of land left, so it's not like you're running out anytime soon. But the majority of your development will be single-family, roughly three-quarters or so. And then multifamily makes up the bulk of the rest. We are projecting We are projecting over 300 manufactured housing in the 10-year period, and a lot of that is focused up in the north. You may have been familiar, in the last couple of years, there's been quite a bit of manufactured housing development up in the north part of the district, north of the loop. And it happens in phases. Occasionally, you'll get a development go in with a few lots. It's hard to predict sometimes outside the city limits. But but that is kind of where it has been happening historically. So we anticipate that to continue slowly over time as well. So I mentioned that your new housing doesn't really generate that many students, and it's true when you compare it to most other districts everywhere else. So in general terms, new housing tends to generate anywhere between 0.55 and 0.7 students per house. So for every 100 homes, you get about 55 to 75 students, but not in Tyler. Again, you have a lot more of a retiree population moving into these communities. So your district-wide students per occupied home number is 0.35. And the truth is, in some neighborhoods, it's even lower than that. And it can be much higher in some, but on average, it's 0.35. And so what we've done, we have to take your active developments, and we look at that. We align your student data to a certain point in time when we actually take counts of new housing. We know how many occupied homes there are at a certain point in time so that we can accurately get this number for every single development in this district. And so a lot of your newer neighborhoods are generating between 0.25 and 0.4 students. And so that's what we're gonna continue projecting. Not every one, but most of them, especially in the southern part of the district. So yeah, for every 100 homes, you're expecting 35 Tyler ISD students. That doesn't mean that there aren't more students living in these houses. They're just maybe not going to Tyler. And in apartments, we have about 0.17. That's also much lower than most clients that we work with. So moving forward, when we're looking at projections, it's a tough year to make projections. It really is. My my brain hasn't stopped working for 12, 18 months, nonstop worrying that we're going to to be under or over. But we do project to that TEA snapshot every year, and it's important to know that because we're only on day four or five right now. So we know enrollment creeps up over time in the beginning of the school year, and it hits that point in late October that's officially reported to the state. That's our snapshot date. And so that's what we project for every year. So today, you're at 17,900 roughly. We expect that number to creep up a little bit towards snapshot. Let's hope it keeps going. So we produced three growth scenarios, and a low, moderate, and a high. And everything Stacy's gonna get up here and talk about in terms of your campus enrollments are using the moderate growth scenario. It's our most likely, based on what we know today. A lot can change, you know? Last time we were up here, we had no idea we were gonna lose 700 students. Sometimes we have a new housing development come in unexpectedly. But our most likely is our is our middle projection that we we focus on. And in your district, there are some other variables that I did want to mention that can affect these scenarios. And one right at the top of my list is your pre-K. And I call it a pre-K ceiling because a lot of times, especially going from half-day, which we know most districts did recently, to full-day, you've been even transitioning. There's a, there's a question we always get asked, well, how many pre-K students do we have? What's our magic number? And it's not super easy to to really figure out. But the the most rudimentary way to think about it is the most eligible group of pre-K students is your free and reduced lunch student population, which is about, what, 75%? So take your kindergarten population, multiply it by that, and you get around 1100 to 1200. But no one, you never get a full representation. You always lack, even every district who tries to collect every student is going to lack some because not everyone wants to send their pre-K child to a pre-K. So we tend to notice full participation being something like 85 to 90%. Well, if you if you think about it that way, you you could hit somewhere at 1,000. We don't know of a lot of, there are no charter schools that really offer pre-K that I know of that are that are pulling from this district. We get that data from the state, and it's always showing a big fat zero. So unless they're not reporting something, we don't know about it. Most charters do have kindergarten, but that's where it starts. Yeah, but it's gonna be small, small potatoes, you know? So from my knowledge, Cumberland and Tyler Classical do not. So and private schools aren't really generating, you know, those are for-profit or not-for-profit, but you essentially have to pay tuition to go to a lot of private schools. And that's not really who's, you know, who we're trying to target here. So I like to think about it as we have a ceiling of about 1,000 students roughly. This year, right now, you're enrolling a little less than 700. So you do have some some room there. I don't know what that magic number really is, but it's somewhere between 650 and 1,000, we believe. So that's something to think about. A decline in recent births, I've mentioned it earlier, that's something we have to think about, too. And we factored that in. Continued charter school growth. Every year, we see a little bit of growth in charter schools, and that's not gonna stop. I'm not seeing it stopping anywhere. We'll probably continue seeing that growth. And occasionally, there'll be a big bump, a new school gets built. But as schools add on or repurpose a building and they add a little capacity here or there, they're gonna continue enrolling students. Our new housing, we talked about a lot about it, and then that COVID rebound. Our scenarios assume that our low growth assumes 65% of our students return that did not show up last year. The high growth assumes almost all of them do, 90%. Right now, you're sitting at about that 65%. So we'll see what happens by October. So here are those three scenarios of growth. And it's showing you last year at 17,700. But we know, of course, that's a lower number than what's really happening out there. So now we're already approaching 18, and that's good news. By the 10-year period, we're not gonna creep up that much. You know, you're seeing there only an 18,758. And that's the moderate growth scenario. The low growth is quite a bit lower because there's a lot that could happen. A new charter school could be built. That would be not a good thing, especially if it was right in the middle of Tyler ISD. A higher growth scenario could mean a lot of regeneration of older housing. That's something we think about a lot, but until you really start getting good data coming in that 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 you can prove that there's, there is regeneration or there are more babies being born, we can't really project for it, especially in our moderate growth. But it's a possibility. The birth rate could could soar, could start going up quite a bit. So those are things we have to think about. So this is our moderate growth scenario, and schools already started. And we're not quite to that 18,234. But we are hitting that low-growth scenario we did think about. So our low growth projected in 2021, which is where we are today, about 17,900, just under, really just shy of 18,000. And that might be where we land. We put these projections together in May and June, pre this fourth surge. So this is where you could be moderate growth. Just know that the moderate growth is likely to happen. It's just a matter, you know, the last year, I've just been saying, I'm not sure when it will happen. But sometime in the next year or two, enrollments will most likely level out. And we're already seeing it. We're seeing it today. We're seeing people come back to the school system. So the the truth is, those first two years, most of that growth is just the rebound essentially from those 700 students that didn't show up. So as they come back in the system, you still have growth. Every year, you're growing a little bit, and some years are a little down, some years are a little up. But we're expecting this to kind of plateau for a while, especially if we're not going to start seeing those younger classes increase. And that's, that's really what we have to think about moving forward. If we start seeing them decline, our lower-growth scenario might be a little more possible. If we start seeing more kindergarteners come to the system, a higher-growth scenario. So our housing really doesn't seem to to be changing too much, and I think that's a good thing. We have a handle on it. We'll just have to make it through the next couple of years and see where we land after COVID. I think there's a potential for some, especially the older students who didn't show up, to maybe stay virtual, especially with all these new virtual programs expanding every year. So it's something to think about. The younger cohorts will most likely come back. Most virtual programs, I believe all of them actually in this state, you can't even enroll until grade three if it's a charter school or ISD virtual program. That's where it starts. So with that, I'll let Stacy come up here and talk about how these numbers actually affect your campuses.
Thank you. You've, oh, you've been very patient and heard a lot of information tonight. So these numbers mean a lot to the the financial people in the district who are dealing with with overall numbers of students. But for those of us who are interested in where are these students going to be and how does that relate to the schools, that's what I'm going to talk to you about. This is another hotspot map, similar to the one you saw earlier for new housing growth, but this reflects new students. Where we see the biggest, we are projecting the biggest growth in elementary student population. And of course, this corresponds with the new housing growth that you heard about from Justin in all of the same areas. But the important, the important point to make is the next step. If you see new students growth in these red hotspot areas, which schools are those students going to show up in? Well, this shows the outline in yellow, the outline of the attendance zones. So those hotspots of growth are concentrated largely in Jones, Jack, and Owens Elementarys. And so the next logical question is, are those campuses, how well are those campuses equipped to handle that potential growth over the next decade? And keep in mind, this is over 10 years. So how does that relate to how much space is available at those three campuses? This map shows those campuses thematically colored based on percent utilization, both what was current when we when we did the study in May and June, which was last fall in 2020, and in 10 years in 2030. If all of the transfers that are happening within the district remain the same, so all of the the same proportions of students are attending Birdwell and Caldwell or transferring among the other schools for whatever special programs, if all of that remains the same and you don't move any special programs anywhere, then the growth that we're projecting to happen in Jack and Owens is, can, it will be accommodated by the capacity currently at Jack and Owens. Basically, there's enough space for the projected new students at Jack and Owens. Jones is the only elementary that shows up red with 133% potential utilization. And part of that is because Jones is a smaller campus, and and part of it is because of the growth of the the Bellwood parcel. So our summary, our conclusion is that the only real consideration as far as the need for a new elementary might be in the in that Jones attendance zone area, and that's only when and if the Bellwood parcel gets underway and starts yielding new students. And again, this is only, this is assuming all of the transfers remain remain similar. At the middle school level, again, this is a hotspot map of growth of middle school students in red, and the yellow outlines are the middle school attendance zones. So the the majority of the growth is projected in the Three Lakes attendance zone area, which is not surprising. And again, this shows how the current schools can accommodate the projected growth. So we see overcrowding in 10 years that is projected at both Three Lakes and Hubbard Middle Schools. And so the the thought for a long time has been that the next middle school would be needed in the south in order to accommodate this this projected growth at both Three Lakes and Hubbard. And that's always a possibility, but from my perspective, I look at 104% utilization at Three Lakes and 110% utilization at Hubbard with this slow growth. And if you were to pull some students from both of those schools into a new middle school, that's not a very well-utilized middle school, and it's not growing very fast. And so it would not really be my first recommendation to plan for a new middle school in the south at this point, unless there were some changes in the sizes and so forth of the middle schools. However, something has to, needs to be done to plan for this growth in the south. And so alternatively, one thing the district might consider is that HOG is a very petite school, and it's very old. It's about 100 years old. And so it has the the issues that come along with the inefficiencies and and challenges of an old building. Also, the with the construction of Three Lakes and the improvements recently to Bolter and Moore, the trend has become to have your middle schools with a capacity of about 1,000 to 1,100. I think I just lost my mic.
You did for a second.
Okay. And so the 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 trend of of about 1,000-student capacity at the middle schools is is typical among most suburban school districts that we work with. But it leaves HOG at a very, very small capacity and Hubbard at a smaller capacity than than the other schools. So one consideration the district might consider, or one possibility the district might consider, is to repurpose the HOG campus for something other than a middle school and to add on and remodel and expand the Hubbard campus such that Hubbard can take on a few more students and the HOG attendance zone could be dissolved among the other existing four middle schools to better utilize the the capacity that you have without the need to build a new middle school. So that's just a consideration. If it is the desire to avoid the need for another middle school within this decade, this is one, one way the district might consider addressing that. And finally, at the high school level, again, we have the hotspots are largely focused in the legacy zone. The Tyler High School does have a growth projected, both schools do. And because of the big, beautiful, brand-new facilities that you've just built, both high schools have enough capacity to accommodate the projected student population for this next decade. So you don't necessarily need to worry about high school capacity, which is a relief after all that construction, I'm sure. So to summarize, at the elementary level, the growth projected at Owens and Jack should be the the existing capacities should be able to accommodate the projected growth in Owens and Jack. There is a possibility for the need for a new elementary school on the west side to relieve Jones if if the, when the Bellwood development gets underway. At the middle school level, Hubbard and Three Lakes are projected to exceed their capacities over the next 10 years. HOG facility is petite and and old and has its own challenges. And Hubbard is smaller than the other newer middle schools. So if HOG could be repurposed and Hubbard could be expanded and renovated, then that could be a way to avoid building another middle school this decade. And the high schools are are sufficient and fine. And I would also like to add that because our long-range planning bent is about helping you understand when and where new campuses might be necessary, that's like, that's a really big action. And in a district that's growing at the rate that Tyler is growing, it's not necessarily, in most cases, necessary to build a new facility. And so I just want you to understand that there are other administrative ways to deal with the small growths and declines in population and small amounts of overcrowding. For example, rezoning is is always a possibility. It's not comfortable, but it's it's a, it's a possibility. And then there are always special program placements that can be moved around or transfer policies that can be changed and and other administrative ways to handle the smaller overcrowding issues that come up in the next, next few years. So with that, we can answer any questions that you might have. So with that, we can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. That's a good bit of information there. Does anybody on the board have any questions for our two presenters? We do have the big demographic study here to go over with and have some light reading there. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions about this study?
I'll ask one. So you had mentioned renovations at Hubbard, and I don't remember what the slide said, but it had Hubbard at 110%, I think, and Three Lakes at like 104 or something. I just wanted to make clear if it was something that was in that neighborhood of 1,011,000 students, that that was plenty of room for whatever the numbers were. You just gave us percentages, there was no student numbers, but...
Yes, so that percentage was based on a Hubbard capacity of about 800. And so if Hubbard can be expanded to 1,000 or 1,100 like the others, and then the HOG zone could be dispersed among the existing middle schools, then yes, there is enough capacity at those middle schools to accommodate that, the projected population.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we will be reviewing all of this information. It's always good to keep an eye on where we're going, and it is funny, Tyler is a hot place. It's growing, but it's always funny to me how our student population kind of lags behind the overall growth. So anybody else have any questions or anything for our presenters? Okay, thank you all so much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have next on our agenda, a couple of approval of minutes, meetings from July 15th and July 19th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. We have a public hearing next on our 2021 and 2022 budget.
Board, tonight is the culmination of work that's been occurring since probably this last February as we've been preparing for this school year. Our fiscal year starts September 1. This meeting is the final meeting, and part of that is you actually have a public hearing on all the good stuff that the district and the public have been learning since March in regard to this, including ESER funding and all the good stuff that we've been planning for assisting students and whatever they might have learned, slid as far as their learning outcomes goes over the last goodness, 18 months or so. So here's the public hearing as we culminate the budget process for the year.
Okay. You mentioned ESER funding. And for all those who maybe not been at these meetings, I say it every meeting, but I think it's good and healthy for the public to know exactly what we mean by ESER.
Gosh. We speak in acronyms in education. Elementary and secondary, what? Gosh, that's why Mr. Bitter's in charge of ESER funding.
In other words, it's COVID funding.
It is.
Funding for recovery.
It is. It's COVID relief funding that has come in three pockets. The first pocket was to make the school districts whole at the back end of 2020 when the economy kind of went haywire. And then ESER III actually came in before ESER II came in, very typical bureaucratic governmental way of doing things, as Austin kind of held on to some of it. Because ESER III, the terminology's inside of ESER III were a little bit more local education agency friendly. ESER II funding actually got held by the state, and there were some things that were being negotiated between Austin and the feds in DC. They finally relinquished that and was able to get that to the school systems as well. Total over three years, Tasha, is an ESER.
Almost 70.
Yeah. So, you know, running me wild and crazy about spending all of it. In fact, we're, you know, some of that stuff can be put into HVAC systems where we can extend our commitment to the community on using preventative maintenance fund in our annual tax rate, which is three cents every year. So we're able to do some of that, maybe extend some of those dollars down the line and take care of some of the HVAC systems and other things that are allowable inside of that. I think you can replace windows. Is that another thing as well?
But there are limitations on what you can and can't spend.
That's correct.
Those funds on.
Yes, sir.
So it's not just a blank check to go spend. We have to spend them on certain things.
That's correct.
Approved by.
And expires in three years, so we're very careful about how we've, if we've used those funds to buy FTEs or personnel units, we're very, you know, we understand which ones those are, and those could potentially be not available in three years. So it's a three-year project to support students, especially in the pockets of our community where they have the highest risk loads, along with the demographics that have the highest risk in regard to their learning outcomes. Those existed before COVID, but we think COVID exacerbated that a little bit, and we've got data that does show that, even though we had a great year last year because we brought all of our kids back to school, in-person learning, as opposed to our peers who stayed virtual nationally and statewide. So I think we have a really good chance to have a good year this year because we're going to have some of that additional support.
Okay. Any comments, any questions? All right. We'll go ahead and move along to our action items. Okay. Action item A is consideration and approval of an order of the Board of Trustees of TISD providing for the defecence and calling for redemption of the 2021 fiscal year. Currently outstanding obligations designated as Tyler Independent District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2012 and Tyler Independent School District Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2014 and others matters in connection therewith.
So over the last 15-plus years, Tyler ISD and its support from the community has been able to update our facilities, nearly every one of them, and we're very appreciative of that. At the same time, we've been able to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and actually refund or refinance bonds along with paying debt off early. So Tasha, why don't you give us a little bit of an update about what this general item is?
On this issue, we are going to early to fees $8 million within the current tax rate, and we're actually lowering the debt service rate a penny. So we will prepay $8 million. This past year was about $7.5 million.
Okay.
And we'll have a report in September showing all of prepayments and refundings we've done and what the savings have been.
So we're paying some bonds off early.
Correct. Tasha, you spoke to reducing the tax rate. The bond that passed 8317 for and against raised the tax rate three pennies. And so last year, we reduced the debt service side another penny, correct? Been the same thing this year. So we're on a pretty good trend on being able to actually be, at least on the debt service side, the same tax rate or lower than what we were when we actually passed that bond.
We were at $33.5 and we're at $34.5 now.
Yeah.
After we passed this.
Okay. Good deal. Any questions or comments regarding item A? I'll just say I'm a huge fan of paying debt off early, and I'm glad that, Tasha, that you've managed our funds well enough, and Marty, y'all have managed our funds well enough to, we can do that, and I'm sure the city of Tyler appreciates it as well. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item A.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of item A of the action.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Onto item B, we have consideration of adoption of the 2021 and 2022 budgets.
As stated, this has been a project since February and March. Does the board have any questions in regard to this year's budget that y'all have worked with since February and March?
No, I know that, I'm sorry, does the board have any questions or comments about the budget? Okay, I'm always proud that we can, and I know Tyler's growing and our valuations are growing, and it enables us to be able to reduce our tax rate. But I'm glad that as a city, we're able to reduce our tax rate and still have plenty of funds to fund our public schools and do it well. And so I'm happy with our budget, and I'm always happy that we get to reduce the tax rate when we can.
Motion to approve the budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Okay. Onto item C, more about our tax rate, consider the adoption of the 2021 and 2022 tax rate.
You know, for a long time, Tyler ISD was eight out of 10 in lowest tax rate in Smith County. We're about number five right now. It's not anything that we've done, but it actually came from out of the last legislative session where they readjusted all the formulas. And so we're at number five out of 10. Bolter's got a piece of our county. You talk about White House, Lindell, Trupar, everybody knows the school districts that are in Smith County. But because of the way they did the formulas, it kind of readjusted and recalibrated a lot of different things, so nothing to our doing to actually raise that up. But I will say this, I know there's been some commentary that I've just kind of heard out there amongst my peers and my friends about tax rates as compared against people like McKinney and Plano and some of the metropolitan areas, but those, you know, they're upwards of $1.50 on the tax rate. So very, very proud to be able to operate a pretty conservative tax rate here, be good steward of funds and be able to do what we can do in fund balance. And then the preventative maintenance thing is something that's very innovative, not too many school systems do that. When we made the commitment, when the district made the commitment back in the early 2000s to start this building initiative, that was something that the community wanted to know, how are you going to take care of these buildings? Were you going to call bond elections to repair these buildings, or were you going to actually be fiscal stewards of that? And three cents of our tax dollars actually are designed to make sure we take care of the painting needs, the parking lot needs, the roofing needs, the HVAC needs, things of that nature that we already plug in, that's part of our DNA in our budget every year, three cents, where other folks will just take on debt after debt after debt doing that. So very cool that I inherited that, and I'm very proud to say that we utilize that proudly.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Any questions or comments about the tax rate? Do I have a motion to approve the new tax rate?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. And then finally, we have consider approval of the 2021 final amended budget.
We're wrapping up our budget right now as we speak, and this is the last action item for the board to consider before we actually close the books and head into audit season. That'll be presented to y'all sometime in October or November.
Okay. Do I have a motion on that item?
Motion to approve the final amended budget.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Okay, we're going on to the continuous improvement, student outcomes portion of our meeting, and we have considered approval of the district's improvement plan and campus improvement plans and the planning process. So could you unpack that a little bit for us, Dr. Crawford?
I'd like to unpack that big old book in front of you right now. This is a compliance with statutory requirements to present the board our improvement plans for each one of our campuses along with the school system. We can have a nice hour-long conversation about those right now. If you have any questions, you're more than happy to call myself, or we'll get you in touch with one of the school chiefs who supervise those areas and maybe even a conversation with a principal or two if we need to. So part of that process is getting in front of the school board for y'all to approve and for y'all to have that information.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think I'd like to choose to just review it and ask questions if we have them for the administration.
Yeah, just one reminder for the board, this is designed by the campus teams in conjunction with central office. So teachers, administrators, and other staff on the campuses design these based upon the goals that they want to achieve, the outcomes they accomplished the year before, and any deficiencies or any strengths that they might want to play upon as we go through the year.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve those, or is this for review, or are we taking a motion to approve it?
It's an action item.
Action item, okay. Do I have a motion to approve these plans?
I move that we approve the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans for all campuses.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Eyes have it, and that motion carries. Okay, now we're moving along to our business, legal, finance, and consent agenda. I think we're going to go ahead and pull items B and C to talk about, and then I will go ahead, unless anybody wants to pull any other item, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve items A through K with the exception of B and C.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the eyes have it, and the motion carries. Okay. Now moving along to item B. It says, consider the approval of a resolution authorizing a one-time COVID-19 vaccination incentive stipend for all district employees who are vaccinated against COVID-19. Dr. Crawford, would you want to talk about it for a little bit?
Sure. I think we enjoyed last year our in-person learning that we had as opposed to quite a few other school systems around the country and around the state that chose to stay home and do things virtually at the detriment of kids. And our teachers did a great job of coming to work every day, fighting off illness when they got it. And here we are in round two, and we really enjoy our teachers and our staff actually showing up to work, and I know that they appreciate it too, the smiles I've seen on their faces last week. They really are glad that the kids are starting this school year out here in person. I do have some concern. I have concern about the illness that's out there right now. I have some concern about the lack of vaccination rates that we have here in Smith County amongst adults, of which our teaching staff is made upon. We know that this sickness has been tragic. We've lost friends. I've lost friends that should not have died last year that had some underlying health conditions that were exacerbated because of this illness. Our teaching staff that we have has some of those. At the same time, I also think that it is a personal choice of whether or not they want to actually access the vaccine, and being able to do that incentivizes this to show the importance of them being in class or that we can conduct in-person learning throughout the school year is why I brought this in front of the board for y'all to consider.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. You know, typically, and as we have experienced over the last few years, just so everybody out there knows, we don't get to talk about these things outside of these meetings. So, you know, typically, I feel like I'm a fairly good judge of where the board is, and I try to, try to bring things that we can work towards consensus on. On this one, I was, I have no clue, and I just wanted, I wanted everybody to be able to talk about it, and I'm glad the public came out and talked. And so it should be an interesting conversation if anybody would like to weigh in on this.
I've got just something to kind of start things out. Dr. Crawford, what, let's just talk about item B first, if that's okay. What data led you to recommend this resolution to reward people who were vaccinated? What data were you looking at that made you believe that this was important enough to bring in front of us?
The fact that folks that are vaccinated, if they do actually, if there's a breakthrough case and they actually get it, the symptoms are certainly not as exacerbated if they've had that. had that. So certainly CDC does provide that data and I know there's a lot of questions about what type of data gets pushed out from either them or the FDA. I'm one of them. But certainly that's part of it. Department of State Health Services here in Texas as well is another piece of, of resource that we use in the district in, in order to do that. So in order to say that, the, the information that we've been able to be presented about what these COVID sickness experiences are like are certainly something that we look at. We also look at our district and whenever we've had somebody sick or we've had some of those personal anecdotes, we've had some things happen, it, it does concern us. We look at some of the sickness that's already occurred this year and whether or not those individuals, how many of those have been vaccinated and have, have not been, and it's about nine to one on adults, on staff that have already been sick in regard to whether or not they have actually received the vaccination or not. Nine to one not receiving it. So multiple sources, to be able to put this in front of y'all for consideration, to say that those that, that actually went the, the extra step to receive a vaccination, if they did so and they actually get sick, that they would, you know, we want to take their days from them because of the fact that they actually went the extra step and did it.
Is there a, is there any kind of punishment aspect for, so, you know, this stipend gets awarded, do you have a big ceremony and you separate these over here and you get nothing and then these you get something? How is this?
That's not what this is all about.
How would you, how would you see this happening in, in the real world?
The board is not, if, if it does pass, the board is not going to deliver big, big checks to elementary campuses saying, these are the vaccinated people, these are not. It's done in, in as discreet a fashion as we possibly can. We don't go announce who chose to participate in this and who chose not to participate in this. In fact, I've got peers and friends that have already told me they're still not going to do it and I respect that. But at the same time, we put that in front of these other folks that might need a little bit of encouragement to go ahead and go forward with it or to actually retroactively go back and say the ones that did actually go and get it to prepare themselves for the school year can be part of that as well. But so no, there's not going to be a big celebration with bands marching down the hallways like the Tyler ISD Foundation awards grants.
And there's no list that, you know, you're not on the list, so you're going to get discriminated against or punished or, you know, anything like that?
No, sir. Nope.
What about the question of natural immunity? You know, that, I felt like that's a pretty reasonable question there that's really not being dealt with on the public realm right now. But did y'all discuss that at all or the value of, of any type of natural immunity to the people that have already had it?
Sure. Certainly there's some herd immunity. That's part of science. That's pretty natural biology, virology 101. We know that that's kind of worked its way through the, through the, through the community. But there's also been folks that have actually circled back around and got it again or got it when they actually had the vaccine. So those discussions have occurred and we're just trying to do our part to offer this, this program to our, our staff if they so choose to do so. We're not forcing them to do it. Just trying to be a little bit innovative to try to provide them the opportunity if they think that's going to protect themselves, it's going to get them to stay at work longer than they would if maybe if they didn't have it, which means that we can keep our schools open, we can keep our classrooms open for students to access and we don't have to flip to virtual learning. There's a laundry list of reasons why, and we've all gone over this the last year about the benefits of in-school learning versus virtual learning or having to shut down our schools. There's also the benefits of, when we started this out, we wanted to make sure we protected our teachers. We realize this new variant might have some infiltration into the younger ages. They can handle it. But I'm, I'm concerned about the older population and we do have older people that, that teach. It's not like we have a bunch of teenagers teaching our kids. So that's kind of why we're going down this path.
Dr. Crawford, it's my understanding that this is completely voluntary. I know a lot of the concern is the privacy of medical information for the people. It's my, again, my understanding that they would need to provide the card or some information to prove that they've had the COVID vaccination, but that's not going to be revealed to anybody else. It's just like HIPAA at the, when you go to the doctor, you sign the people that you want to know and nobody else has access to your medical information. It's sort of the same thing that we're talking about doing. I'm going to go and show you my, my COVID vaccination card and let you know that I've had, had the, the vaccination. So therefore you can turn around and pay me my stipend. But nobody else has access to that information unless that person tells them, just like nobody has access to your, your pay information unless you go and you tell them, unless it's something that you're talking about. So am I correct in thinking that that wouldn't be a violation of any type of, of privacy?
No ma'am, it's a choice if you do elect to, to actually participate in this initiative. We're actually also going to be hosting a clinic with our, with our, our partner in Christus. We've already got that pre-slotted for, for staff to actually participate if they'd like to. We're on that, they show up on their own at that, we don't force them to go. We'll, we'll advertise it. I think that's the right thing to do is advertise that. But we have HIPAA certified folks that work in our school system. I'm not one of them, so I'm not going to go look and see who did it and who didn't do it. So that's going to be the, the, the way we handle it, is the way we handle all medical information. We have other medical incidents that are very proprietary to only those folks that work with, that are HIPAA certified in our school system. The privacy is, is of utmost importance on that and we'll treat this the same way.
Hi. In regards to opposition. I feel very strongly that it's our responsibility to make sure that our children are safe when they attend our schools and I've been very concerned about that with COVID from the very beginning. I am, you know, I think that we've done an excellent job in combating COVID on last year and maybe you should explain what we did last year and how we were able to be so successful in light of the situation that we were going through. And my understanding is that we did much better than most districts in the state in regards to the outcome. So what, how were we able to do that from your perspective?
By keeping our teachers healthy. And there were some mitigations that were allowable that had community buy-in, that the general citizenry bought into, that may not be as evident now as it was a year ago at this time or even out throughout the year. So when you start trying to look at other strategies that are out there that are available to keep our teachers coming to school, if they choose to, this vaccination incentive would be one of those. Last year, we did have some other barriers put in place that right now is debatable on whether or not we're able to actually institute those or not. But we stayed pretty healthy last year. Our adults stayed very healthy last year and there were still students that received it.
Right.
Because we don't really have monitoring opportunities when they leave us. When I pack eight girls in my expedition to go to a birthday party, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of other birthday parties that are occurring throughout the school year to where they're not having as tight of protocols as the school system had. Those things are not as available now as they were across the citizenry, across the demographics, across the zip codes in our school system. It is not as tight as it was at one time. So is the virus going to be a little bit more prevalent? Probably. Is it going to mutate? Yep. Because it's biology. So what can we do to provide our, our, our teaching staff and our staff the opportunity to maintain that efficacy of being able to show up to work every day and, and man that classroom, which is so important for our, the children of our community?
Okay. In light of that, I know that we returned to school much earlier than some of the other districts. We were very successful in our standardized outcomes in comparison to the state. And I, I agree that there are a number of factors that we implemented that a lot of districts didn't implement, especially on the east coast and the west coast in regards to making sure that our kids were safe to return to school and learn. We had a big deficit when we were doing the virtual learning, deficit academically and, and everything else. I'm, I'm very concerned about our lower grade levels, elementary in particular, since there is nothing actually to protect those individuals from the COVID and the spread of COVID within our district. I'm very concerned from the aspect that our classrooms were not designed for six feet distancing. We've done the best we can within the schools that I've been able to visit to make concessions for that in addition to wearing the mask for those campuses last year. I'm, I'm very concerned about that group in regards to their exposure to COVID, knowing that the symptoms are not as apparent as it was initially when COVID came into existence, which means that it could be carried by an individual student less than 12 years of age back to their homes and they may not display any symptoms, but that grandparent within the home could very well contract COVID from that child that didn't display any symptoms and, you know, death is maybe a possibility. So, you know, when you look at that, I, I really get concerned about the environment in which we provide a safe education for our children. I, I have no problem with incentives from this perspective. I think that anything we can do to encourage a, a safe environment for our children, we should be doing. So I, I think that if we can encourage individuals to, that want to be in the classroom, to make sure that they are responsible for those kids in all aspects, as well as educating them and keeping them safe, we should do that. So I, I'm not opposed to this incentive, if you want to call it that. I, I think that it's our responsibility to encourage our staff to do what it is, do whatever possible to make sure our kids are safe while they're in our care.
No doubt. Last week I did have the opportunity to visit every campus, all 30 in our school system. Probably got to go into 90 classrooms or 90% of the, 95, 90% of the classrooms that were, that were occupied and were actually doing teaching and learning. I will say that I, I was taking some anecdotal data as I was going by there and I did see more masks on staff and students there and absenteeism of a mask mandate. So it looks like the parents and the grandparents are doing their job and then so far that, you know, just one week of, of data that our students are actually participating that way and, and our, and our actual staff are doing the same thing as well. So ditto on your concern, no doubt about that. We'll keep an eye on it and see what we need to do down the road, if, if there is anything we need to do down the road.
Back to the, the specific nature of item, item B as far as this stipend goes, I did have just a question to clarify. You know, is this coming out of that ESAR funding that we were talking about earlier? Would this, this money be used from those funds that, that have come for COVID relief?
It is allowable from ESAR. It is not your general tax dollars. It is the dollars that have been provided to the school system from the feds to actually provide mitigation strategies for COVID and where from learning to these safety proposals that we have, whether it be buying more PPE or actually the vaccine does actually qualify.
Okay.
I'm just happy to think of something else. Back to the privacy thing. Those people who are, who will be getting the stipend is not necessarily an extensive list of, of the people who are receiving the vaccination. It's just the people who are willing to show that card. And it's not necessarily true that everybody that does not, didn't get the, didn't get the, the shots. So, but they are declining the stipend if they're not willing to reveal whether or not they've had the, the vaccine. So it's not like it's, we have the list of all these people that have had the vaccine and then all these other people don't. It doesn't, A does not equal B.
That's correct, Dr. Nation. This is a choice to opt in, for one. It's also a choice to opt in to whether or not you want to submit that. I already know staff that is not going to participate, either conscientiously, they may already have it and they don't, they don't want to do this, or they're just not going to do it because of some of the things we've discussed here tonight. But I also know that there is staff that actually is going to participate. So I think, again, it is a free will to be able to participate and to be able to do this. You may have already had the COVID shot without this initiative and you may not think anything of it.
Yep.
Or you may not choose to get the shot.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so I, I work for an employer that's one of the largest in Smith County and they're running the similar program. And the reason they're doing it is because they're attempting to keep healthcare workers healthy so that they're around to treat people that get sick. I don't see this being a whole lot different as we're trying to incentivize teachers to stay healthy in an effort to be there to take care of our kids. So, so yeah, certainly I'm in favor of using whatever tools that we have available to us and, and it's a tool that may not be, may not be the right tool for everyone. But certainly, you know, people have the option to say, say yes or no, they have the option to, just like they have an option to, to say yes or no to a mask. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm obviously in favor of, of whatever we can do.
Dr. Crawford, do we know how many individuals in our school system still have polio, diphtheria, the black plague, any of those illnesses from back then?
Man, the black plague? No ma'am. I think we all received those things at a fairly young age and have gone on and we didn't ask them for that information.
So do we know how many teachers have underlying conditions like high blood pressure, which the medications they take can have side effects as well or any other illnesses that could cause side effects from having medicine?
I mean, from time to time, our HIPAA certified staff does have to have those conversations. We are a self-funded school district unlike other school districts across the state. So sometimes when there's those things that have to be discussed between our partner and them, we're sometimes invited in to have those discussions with those employees or it's, it's kind of their thing to actually opt in to let us know that they've got that issue. We don't go out hunting for it and making them tell us if they've got an underlying health condition or not. But sometimes they self-select and tell us.
Are you listening to any, I guess, wayward?
Or it's, it's kind of their thing to actually opt in to let us know that they've got that issue. We don't go out hunting for it and making them tell us if they've got an underlying health condition or not. But sometimes they self-select and tell us.
Are you listening to any, I guess, wayward? We have so many experts on COVID, a whole bunch of experts on COVID. So are we listening to information from the left wing, the right wing, the up wing, the down wing, the in-between wing? Are you getting information that's helping you to decide instead of so many experts' opinions?
Absolutely. We, we have local doctors and we also have folks that run these hospitals that we've talked to. And they think it's a good idea for us to do that. Because again, it's going to ultimately leave the goal that Mr. Martinez described and that I have family seeing every day. And that's making sure that those hospital beds are, are, are not as full as they are right now. So absolutely, I don't just sit there and watch the news and figure out if Rachel Maddow wants us to do something or Tucker Carlson wants us to do something. That's not the way you conduct business. That's not how you lead. That's not how you get information. So no, ma'am.
So COVID is scary for everybody. It's, it's new and, and we're getting information from everywhere. We want to do, our goal is success for student outcomes. We want to do what is best for our students. I wear masks and I will continue to wear masks because I want to be healthy and I want to make sure you are healthy as well. And so whatever I can do to achieve that, I'm going to do it. And so as a board, we're not just sitting around trying to figure out how we can determine who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated. It was just like career ladder to me back then. Teachers got career ladders. We did not know who was on the career ladder. Teachers will not tell you how much they make. They will not tell you if they get a bonus because they do not want you to know. And so to sit here and just say that, we're going to embarrass people. We're going to do that, you, not me, but you are going to embarrass people. You know, stand up if you've been vaccinated. That's not the goal. We are not, we're not going to do that. And so I, I, I am American. I have a right to, to those things as well. And so we have both sides. I'm not going to get angry. I'm not going to tell teachers to lie and say it's a religious thing because that's not being truthful. And so we're not making them do that, is what I'm trying to say. I'm, I'm not making you try to come up with some excuse why you, if you're not vaccinated, that's your business. If you are vaccinated, that's your business. I don't want to know anybody's business. I just want to keep me and my family safe. I've seen too many people die, a horrific death alone. You know, death is when you're supposed to be the star of the show. You're the main attraction, but now you have to die by yourself. You have to die alone. People can just do a drive-by. So it's scary for all of us. And so I want to do what's best for our teachers, for our students, and for our community. So whatever is best for them, that's what we're looking for. That's my spiel.
Okay. I just, I just do want to reiterate that the monthly meetings of the board are designed to conduct the business of the, the governing of the school system in public. However, it's not a meeting to act, interact with the public. And obviously, we welcome everybody as guests to observe and listen. But that's why we have public participation. So we have had, we have had this room full of, of 100-plus people a few years ago and had, had less, you know, interaction than even tonight. So this is not our opportunity to talk about it. So if y'all would respect that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Washman, I feel like there's a compelling interest that school be in person. To me, I feel like the data shows that adults are less likely to be seriously ill if vaccinated. This is not a mandate. This is an option, okay? I would love it if we considered natural immunity as part of the process. If we're trying to get to a certain level of protection, how do you get there, whether it's through a shot or whether it's through natural immunity? To me, that ought to be considered. But having said all that, I move we approve item B as written.
Second.
Okay. I do have a motion in the second on item B. Do I have any more discussion on item B before we move to vote on this? Okay, I'll go ahead and enter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it and the motion carries. Dr. Crawford, I was conflicted on this one. But I did hire you in 2012?
2014.
2014, sorry. That's right. I wasn't on the board till 13. I hired you in 2014 to be the CEO of the school district. We have improved tremendously in educationally and you have earned my respect as a board member for a CEO who can make decisions that he feels is best for his organization. So on this, this deal, being on the fence, kind of like I, I was, what really put me over was your performance as a CEO. And, and it's your job to, to run your district and make sure that, that your, your employees are healthy as you see fit. So on this one, I've got your back. And I do echo Mr. Bergfeld's sentiments. And maybe there's some ways we can figure some stuff out on, in that regard. But let's move along and talk about item C.
So C is in the same vein. Knowing that an employee has done what we think could help them stay in that classroom and somehow actually get sick with COVID. They've done what we've asked them to do or what we've provided for them to do and they've chosen to do that. And if you start talking about the opportunity for leave, you start talking about being able to cover their leave days. Cover their leave days. And at the same time, being able to go ahead and understand that if someone else in their family does get ill, that they've got those sick leave days built in for, to take care of maybe a spouse or their kids. Because they're coming to work. So that's why we've actually tagged this on as well in regard to being able to provide this incentive out there as well.
Okay, any comments or questions for Dr. Crawford?
So there was a, there's a federal component that expired of this. And, and we're just saying that if it's not reinstated, you would like the ability to reinstate it at the district level?
Yeah, for, for this year. It's FRRCA. Does that, did I get that right? Yeah, so.
And this, just reading through it, this doesn't, does this distinguish between people that are vaccinated and not vaccinated?
That participate in the vaccination program.
Where is, where, which clause is that?
I'm going to borrow Ms. Atkins' resolution. Counselor, can you find it quicker than I can? Last sentence of number one on page two.
Okay.
Counselor, is that the adjusted one?
Yeah, I see it. So what we're saying is that we'll give you more time on sick leave if you're vaccinated and get sick than if you just got sick and weren't vaccinated.
That's correct.
Seems a little more punitive to me. You know, like I said, you're leaving out natural immunity, that whole group that has the same level of protection theoretically that someone with a vaccine, vaccine does. But they're not, we're going to punish them somehow and not give them the same care. I don't know. It seems a little more punitive than just a, an, a, someone choosing to participate in a program or not. That's, that's causing me a little bit of, little bit of concern on this.
Dr. Crawford, in regards to the district, what are we doing to make it available to our employees to have access to the vaccination? What are the plans?
So we have a date prescribed, September 11th, with our partner at Christus to provide a shot clinic at C D C.
So all the employees would be made aware that the vaccine is completely free of charge and they have the opportunity to come anytime during that day to have access to the vaccine?
Yes, sir. They also can get it before then as well. But that's, I believe, but I don't believe there's any cost to get it at a pharmacy right now, is there? Net Health, I know, is giving it, is, is actually dealing with it no cost as well.
Okay. Yeah, I know Net Health is, is.
I don't think the pharmacies are charging either, but I'm not certain on that.
Yeah.
So I have that same question as Mr. Bergfeld. Suppose I decide, I'm, I'm vaccinated, but I decide not to tell you and then I get sick. So am I, because I didn't tell you, because I didn't get the stipend, but I've been vaccinated. So then, that's the same issue. I've been vaccinated, but I don't want to let you know. And I get sick, but I only have two days left. So I'm, it's like you punishing me for getting sick, even though I.
I don't like that word, punishment.
Used up all my days, so I don't have any available days.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
I can go to the sick bank or something.
Yeah. We're not here to punish anybody that gets COVID.
Correct. I'll take that word back.
I know.
But I'm not going to get the same benefit.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
But that would be your individual choice because it's made known in advance that if you do, you will have extra coverage. So if you choose not to disclose that you have the vaccination and you get COVID, that was your choice not to make it available to you.
Right, so should I not get extra days because I made that choice?
It was your choice not to reveal that information.
Again.
I'm just saying.
I understand. I need to understand what I'm saying.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this particular issue? Do we need more time to think about this particular issue?
How would, going to Mr. Bergfeld's question regarding natural immunity, how would we verify natural immunity if we were to consider something like that?
Well, like, I took my whole family and they got, this was over Christmas, so that we could see if we could be around the grandparents or not. And everybody got tested. And four out of five people in my family had had it and had immunity levels that were as good or better than the vaccine from what I'm told. Now, I don't know enough about it to go in depth. That's just what I was told. So, you know, at that point, we felt good enough being around, you know, the grandparents so that we made that decision. So to me, that's, you know, and that's if four out of five in my family had them. There's a lot of people out there and a lot of people in this district that probably feel, you know, and that's not, I, when no one knows the science, I'm not saying I do. But for the short term, as much as a vaccine is, as we know about that, now that we're going to have to have boosters and boosters and variants, I do think there's, that should be part of the discussion. Because people that have had it and that have those immunities, you know, they, they feel like they ought to be rewarded too and not punished.
About how many days are we talking about? As many as they need or per person?
Oh, no. It's up to a maximum of 10. But there's, it really, it's when symptoms are presented, that's when you start the clock. Very rarely, because of what T E A guidance said and D S H S guidance has said about when they return to work, do you actually, especially with this latest round of COVID, do you actually see those 10 days fulfilled? Is what we're projecting.
Dr. Crawford, I'm not saying that this would happen here, but I know that it has happened in other situations or in other districts. How do we know that they actually have COVID? Is it the doctor's diagnosis and they have proof of that? Okay, so they can't just come in and say, well, I've got COVID?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I'm thinking.
So if we're considering natural immunity, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we would determine that if we were going to do it that way. It would require at least some medical professional stating that that person has the natural immunity at this point, which basically, it doesn't mean that they can't get it again. It's at that point when they actually were tested that they had their immune, their immune system was strong enough to resist the, the virus. So, so if we even considered doing that, it would require that person going to the doctor, getting some medical excuse to indicate or a statement indicating that they have a natural resistance to that virus at that particular point. That, and I'm just trying to think how we could do it if we did it. That would be the only way that I can see that we can legitimately do it and indicate that they have a natural resistance, although we know even people that have, that take this vaccination can have it again. So under the same thought, if that person has the natural resistance and they get COVID, I can understand where Mr. Bergfeld's coming from in regards to that if it's actually been verified that they actually have that resistance. So I can understand what he's, what he's saying at that point.
Disclosure at the dice now, on your resolution, it's effective August 1 of this year, of this school year. So if you're talking about retroactive stuff back to having COVID in the spring of 2020, that's a, you know, that's, that's a pretty far reach back in regard to this resolution and this program. We designed this, again, kind of seeing what the landscape looks like and what protocols we have in place now versus what we had last year, what's to our availability, the advent of the vaccination and the availability of the vaccination. And then doing it, knowing that this one's a little bit more, this virus is a little bit more agile this time around, affecting different people in different ways. And we actually started this August 1 because that was when we started gathering back again. So we didn't, you know, some folks had actually proposed the start of our new contract year around July 4. And I said, no, not everybody was back by then. So new teachers came back August the 4th, I believe. And that's when we started having a lot of in-person stuff. So that's why we set the, the benchmark of this, the 1st of August. So that's just something for y'all to consider. If natural immunity is, is to be considered, we need to change that date or that's the, that's the date that you start from, understanding that you might have, we need your documentation that you actually had it so that you can qualify this.
Is there any scenario where this could be abused by people taking more day, taking the full 10 days? Or how does that, how does that work as far as the length of time? Or how does that, how does that work as far as the length of time?
If you get beyond the 10 days allotted here, then it goes into your kind of a length of time.
But say you got the sniffles and you think, you know what, I got, I'm vaccinated, I got the sniffles, I got a positive test, I hadn't had fever, I'm symptom-free, I guess you just have to sit out the 10 days anyway. If you get a positive test, what's the protocol there?
If you have a positive test, you do have to sit out the 10 days, no matter what. That is a TEA guideline and CDC, but most importantly, TEA, the Texas Education Agency?
You got to have a positive test. That's right. So you're out 10 days. As far as natural immunities go, I feel like one of the only ways is for people just to go get tested for antibodies and if you got them prior to it, because when you, when you get COVID, I mean, you're getting tested for COVID, do, can, I mean, I know this comes to a big surprise to a lot of people out there, I'm actually not a virologist, a scientist, medical professional. But if, if you go get COVID tested and you get a positive test, do, can they still test for antibodies while you, is your body already producing antibodies when you get COVID? I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a question I have.
I'm detecting y'all have a lot of questions on this and I do too. And what may sound good on paper may just have a lot of opportunity for, for questions. So if you want me to go and try to find some research and y'all can sit on this a little bit about natural immunity, along with what you just, antibody testing and things like that, you can either table it or y'all can take it to a vote, vote it down, whatever you need to do on that, because this seems like there's a lot of questions I can't even answer because like, just like you're not a virologist, I'm not either. And, and again, you know, we, we started this stuff out asking for grace. So trying to do the best we can with something that's never been presented to us.
Well, and here's the deal.
And, sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, listen, that, I've, I've begged people over and over again, over the course of my time on the board, you know, national politics is one thing, okay? And then there's what we're doing here to, to do what's best for us locally. We're a pretty accessible bunch of folks. This, we don't get our data from, you know, the news. We try to, try to go to local hospitals. I see your sign, Mr. Berg. They're actually not allowed in meetings, but.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. But there, there's no big conspiracy about data collecting with our employees and there's just not. And I want to say that clearly. You know, Dr. Crawford is trying to have the healthiest staff he can have, you know? I'm not a mandate guy, okay? But this is in fact a choice. This is a choice. So, you know, like you said, you know, operate with a little grace and let us get through it. I do feel like maybe on, on this particular item, we could do a little more research, maybe bring it up, talk about it later, get a more comfortable feel on it. If that's what the board wants to do.
I think for me, if we're going to wait, I think the information I'd love to have is, is less about that part and more about, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to encourage people to get tested so that they're, so that they're not in the classroom with COVID and we're looking at safety and security of our kids, I guess I would want a, a, a removal of the punitive part of it, but a, a cost analysis, say, of what, what more it would cost to just pay everyone for being gone. I mean, how hard is that? That'll encourage people to get tested, that'll encourage people to, to know if they're sick that they're not coming back to work.
Test, local tests, onsite tests too, and we applied for that. So TEA, again.
Antibody test.
I don't know about that.
In regards to what we're doing, how does this affect? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just, I haven't thought. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, maybe yes, sir will pay for it, I don't know.
I, I was just concerned about the implementation of this process.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Newsom. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I don't know what's going on. In regards to the implement, implementation of, of this policy that we just approved and what we're talking about now, how does that affect everything in regards to the deadlines, et cetera? Do we have any idea?
Not on, the, the first one was, we're trying to get this done expeditiously, understanding that we're not even into the fall and winter yet.
Right.
When people start really sneezing in East Texas with the gold dust on our vehicles. So that's a different thing. This, this policy here can take some more time to research on the leave because you can retroactive back to a date. If we get to a place where y'all are comfortable with it. You may not get there. You know, FRCA, FRRCCA, whatever it's called, colloquially, it was called FRCA. We've already been through this and I think y'all actually approved a resolution, maybe you didn't, back in, when this first started. But regardless, if you didn't, that was a, it was a federal law that you could actually, that we were supposed to take care of our folks that, that got sick. So it's not like this is something that's new to us, that we didn't go through last time or this, this, or last year at this time, because that expired when, Rojo? At Christmas? Yeah, Christmas, so. And I just said Christmas at the dice, so there you go. Good. Christmas, Christmas, Christmas.
I have no problem with tabling it and looking at the natural immunity aspect. I, I don't know if we want to change the retroactive date or not, but I think it may be worth considering the natural immunity aspect of it.
Sure. We can do some more research on that and if it gets back to the dice in regard to that, we'll have, try to do the best we can on that. I don't, I don't know who we're going to go to to figure that out.
Yeah. All right, well, then I have a motion to table until a future date. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so item C has been tabled to a later date. Okay, moving on to our curriculum instruction consent agenda. We are going to pull item F because we have a, a written motion for that one, but I'll go ahead and entertain motions on item A through H with the exception of F.
Does I move?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Washman?
Yes.
Who made the motion on that last, on the table, Mr. Bergfeld?
Mr. Newsom.
I'm sorry.
I, I did.
Mr. Newsom did, excuse me. Okay. This was kind of.
I know, I know. I've been there. I kind of came back to it. Okay. Item F, we have a consider, we have a deal going on to consider approval with field and clinical teaching experience. It's an agreement with the University of Texas at Tyler. There are some things in the agreement that we need to iron out, so.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement with UT Tyler pending final revisions and approval of district legal counsel.
Thank you. Okay, I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to our superintendent and staff report, we have a first week of school update. Dr. Crawford?
Well, what do you want to talk about? Because we just got through talking about everything that I was going to talk about, including the demographic study. Who gave the biggest surprise to us is that we, we're operating at 17,900 students right now, which my estimate, Tasha, is about 400 plus, if not 500 plus students than we finished with last year. We're excited about our pre-K and K numbers. That made up a bulk of last year, the kiddos that were staying out, they're actually back. So we appreciate our community and our parents out there trusting us to get their students on the right, off on the right foot as far as their educational experience goes. Again, I visited 90% of our classrooms in the district last week. We've got staff that's been on campuses for the better part of last week and into day two as well. So it's been a very busy opening of school like it always is here in Tyler, Texas, but a very successful opening of school. There weren't a whole lot of rules and regulations. They were starting to get after it on day one, which is refreshing for us. We encouraged our staff, we challenged our staff to make sure that this year, that we take advantage of the year that we had last year by having a great year this year. And after listening to some of our peers across the state, they're struggling to get back on track while we were on track and I'm very excited about that. So anything y'all want to talk about with the first week of school? Again, we've addressed a lot tonight through, about the first week of school and about our classrooms going through this as well. Teachers are happy, fighting and concerned about some of the, the illnesses out there, but, but at the same time, a lot of, of smiling teachers that are really excited about the school year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Crawford about the first week of school? What's going on? I've been on a few campuses and I've seen a lot of smiling faces, which makes me happy. I've seen a lot of excited teachers and kids and I know my kids had a great first week. And I'm, I'm proud to be sending them to school in person and I'm proud for them to be learning with their, with their peers. Does anybody have anything?
No.
No? Okay, y'all tired of being here? Okay, well, thank you for that update. Okay, we have a local policy reading. It's a first reading on local policy, DEC and EIC.
So the first reading on the first one is in regard to actually leaves and absences, especially with our peace officers that we have on our campuses. You'll go through there and kind of look through that. There's been some legislation that's actually changed in regard to some of the opportunities that they may have in, in certain circumstances if there is some type of event that occurs at a campus, trying to take care of our, our folks that take care of us at school. And the last one's academic achievement class ranking. I believe that has to do with some of the adjustments we did earlier.
Yes, we, we adjusted two policies and this one just aligns the two.
Yeah. It's a, it's a TASB cleanup in regard to the nine-week grading periods that we have. Full disclosure, we gave them this upfront, but it somehow slipped through the, the cracks on, on their end and then they're having to come back around and do that. So sorry to bring this back to y'all to, to have to readdress again, sometimes that happens.
It's okay. As we always do with first readings, if we have any questions for the administration, we know who to reach out to before we bring it back. Okay, future business, we got a September 9th workshop and a September 20th regular meeting. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.